Thanks, Joyce. Everything rearranged here. It is according to Apple 202. And I will call the special meeting February 22 to order. And as a public service reminder, these meetings are always open to the public. Their meetings of the board of selectmen to conduct the ongoing business of the board. If you'd like to offer comment, there's an opportunity on the agenda to do so. When commenting, please state your name and title if applicable. If there is a meeting interruption due to disconnection or weather, we'll do our best to resume no less than 30 minutes from the time of interruption. Alrighty. Order of business is public comment. And I'm gonna scan our virtual room here. If you can put your hand up. Virtual hand. Don't see any hands up. Oh, there's Teresa.
No, sorry, I was just looking for the hand, sorry.
Oh, okay. And you in Zoom, you have to also, yep, there you go, put it down. Alrighty, so moving on to pick up where we left off last week. So we'll get right back in. John, I'm gonna add you, John Russell, I'm from the fire department, I'm gonna add you to the spotlight, although it seems that I can't, I don't know why. Joyce, if you can add him, oh, there we go. I think I just got that.
Turn on my video or something.
There we go. Um, is there anybody else that you wanted? Hold on to the spotlight, I see Eric is here.
Yep.
Okay.
Eric would be great.
Alrighty. Thanks, so when we left off, we were getting into the discussion about the EMS staffing. And I'll turn the floor over to you.
Okay, well, I think Eric was gonna crunch some numbers for us on on the staffing. It was Alan and Bonnie's best guess on whether what kind of a volunteer EMT lineup we had, or for 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 the year, Eric, am I am I right about that, or? Yep, okay. Little hard to hear, Eric, I'm not sure.
Nope.
Now, you're you're muted.
No. My guess is he'll be back.
Okay.
Do you want to fill in any gaps, John, or were we? Did we, was that all coming from Eric?
Yeah, I know that was that was gonna be Eric to Looks like Eric, yeah, it looks like he may be trying to sign in on the phone.
Yep. All right, let's see if we can get Eric back in the cube here. I see you're on the panel, Eric, can you hear us?
I shot Bonnie and Alan a text to see if maybe they could join, they might. I know they both had obligations today, but. Gee, I got a text from Eric saying, it says the host won't let me unmute.
Joyce, can you take a look at that from your end? I clicked the ask to unmute button.
I did that too, I I don't know why he can't unmute.
Let's see. Difficulties?
I tried making him a co-host.
Jean, is the fire department the only topic for this meeting? I don't know if you're able to.
We have a couple of other topics, I was hoping to get this sort of figured out.
As were we.
So Eric, if you can hear us, your um, I think he's gone again, nope, he's still there. At your Zoom at least is on mute. Now it's not on mute, can you hear us? So I guess we'll come back. And we can move on and talk about the resident state trooper. The request that Andy Osif made for the second trooper.
All right, I'll work with Eric, see if we can get something arranged here, sorry about that, folks.
That would be great. Um, me reshuffle the deck chairs here. Okay. So, um, Andy had put in the request for us to add funding for a second trooper. We had had some initial conversation about it. If you look in the folder, there's also information on the last five years, Barbara provided us with that. Um, if you want to take a look at that. There, they just signed another new contract, so they're gonna, the troopers will be getting a 2.5% increase. I did ask out to the Warren first selectman if they would be interested in having a conversation about a shared trooper. And he said, well, probably unlikely he would still bring it to his board for to open up the discussion. So looking um, let's see. Sorry, I need to get to the right folder here. Wonder, what's the board's thoughts on this funding request?
Where? Where did Barbara put the other information? Oh, never mind, I think I see it. Yeah, fiscal year 18 and on, okay, never mind.
So I did get some information from the Litchfield first selectmen. And I did plug in some numbers. These are preliminary, let me get this so I can share it. We all see a PDF that says estimated cost of a constable, I don't know why it says training there, it's just a something that I put there for some reason. So down at the bottom, you see those estimated costs. Two things that are missing are training and I'm sorry, three, the vehicle data storage and training, because there's some variability there. As far as the training, if they are recently retired state trooper, they would come with post-training and then we would have to do retraining. If they it depends, if they were a local municipal, I don't know if, you know, depends on if how long they've been retired, but we would likely want to get them additional training, the data storage, again, I think I've said this a couple of times, is a big piece. The body cams run about 900 to $1,200 each. And then, and that's not even the the big nut, so adding in however much data storage and possibly either contracted person or a part-time person to manage that data, make sure that it's, you know, it gets converted for any requests for that data, because it has to be converted into files that people can publicly consume. And then a vehicle. You know, it has to have certain packages that come, you know, that meet the federal standard, etc. You know, a lot of this would be initial. Obviously, these are not annual, but this would, so we're, you know, looking at easily well over $100,000 for a startup for a constable, and that's you know, we would have to have a search and a, you know, a search committee and
You know, even adding a constable is I I think is difficult without the numbers of what is happening now. You know, in the Waterbury paper about Litchfield, they had specific numbers. And their constables were replaced for cost reasons. But they had absolutely specific numbers about how many calls the two resident troopers were responding to, we haven't gotten that.
I thought I shared it at the last meeting.
You know, we should have absolute.
Heard that at the last, I'm pretty sure I shared that at the last meeting in 2021, it was 1571 with 41 motor vehicle collisions and 22 was 1610 with 45 motor vehicle collisions.
That's in the in the folder?
No, when we were talking about this at the last meeting, I'm pretty sure I shared that, what, and then I'm pretty sure I shared that, you know, there are there are some you know, incidental, if he's at the PATCO and someone walks up to his vehicle and you know, they're asking for some sort of minor assistance. That may not get a, you know, a dispatch number.
Jean, can you repeat those numbers, and I believe that you actually reported that to Board of Finance, not Board of Selectmen?
Oh, I apologize then, it's 1,571, I'm sorry, for your 2021 1571 with 41 motor vehicle crashes. 2022 was 1610 with 45 motor vehicle crashes.
Thank you.
How many motor vehicle in 2022?
Forty-five.
So we're getting worse and are driving.
So this was shared with the Board of Finance and not us, I don't remember this at the last meeting.
No.
Yeah, I apologize, I I when I mentioned it, it was at Board of Finance, not here.
Okay, so this is the first time we're hearing these numbers.
So I'm gonna stop that screen share. So I did I did run some other numbers and I don't know what happened to the worksheet, I have UCA Tech working on that, so taking the 20, the fiscal year, you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna scan this. Because it's just gonna be easier for me to show it to to everybody. Went to pull it up a couple of minutes before the meeting and it wasn't there. So the the concept of what I'm going to show you is basically I took the overtime, the fringe, everything involved in the program and built out a planned program for overtime for the following, for next fiscal year. It's much easier to show you than to explain it, so give me one second. Stand by. Okay. There are a couple of adjustments that I need to make, but this will at least give a little bit of a better picture of what I'm talking about. Okay, everybody can see that RST program costs analysis, so taking the fiscal year 22 actuals, plugging them in. The fiscal 23 projection, plugging that in. I basically created a this sort of planned overtime, so if you look at this the this table, which is based on an average hourly rate of $129, it may be one trooper, it may be two troopers, depending on if it's an on day for Andrew, this would be layered on on that on the resident. Does not include whether emergencies, large-scale incidents, anything else. So for speed enforcement two hours a week, and I actually increased this a little bit, because I think we would be, we should and and could do more. So that would go up, but just looking at the bottom line and I, one of these formulas is not correct, but we're looking at approximately $70,000 if we were to do this planned overtime, where ahead of time, we would have, because everything goes through the resident state trooper, so we would ask you know, weekly for speed enforcement for a second trooper to do speed enforcement. They have a minimum for overtime, the minimum is four hours, so even though we would initial initially, when I put this together, I was looking at two hours, but the the minimum for overtime is a four-hour shift, so that obviously would change. And then in the summer, it would be 10 hours each weekend, five on Fri- on Saturday, five on Sunday. Between that July 1 and September 30, again, the these figures are going to be a little bit higher, and then holiday patrols, and I spoke with Andrew about all of this. And then the election coverage was based on last year, what we had. So if we were to plan this, it you know, it lets us sort of look ahead, lean ahead. But it's all based on availability, if Andrew requests speed enforcement, you know, a speed enforcement patrol for a a week, you know, a certain day, that particular week, and there's no trooper available, then there's no trooper available, obviously, we don't spend that money, but that's the the risk that we can plan for all of this planned overtime, which I think may be a better way to go. It's just an option that I wanted to bring forward to folks. And again, I apologize that the spreadsheet's not updated. But it gives you, you know, it gives you at least an idea of where sort of somewhere in between a full second trooper and a and nothing. So I I would estimate it would be, you know, $75,000.
So Jean, the first document you showed us was a constable. That was different for the second troopers, so that constable is $84,000.
Now, the constable is gonna be more than that, because those three items were not included, the data, the vehicle and training.
The Glenn Waterbury article about Litchfield said that the estimated cost for constables, two constables would have been approximately 400,000. The cost for using two resident troopers for Litchfield will be about 348,000. So it's a lot cheaper using troopers than constables because of the police accountability law.
So that second sheet that we just saw, that is, that's a part-time trooper or a full-time?
Nope. Neither, that is planned overtime, and that was just a
$75,000.
Concept that I came up with, I spoke to Andrew, we fleshed out a schedule, that was all very preliminary. But I was trying to come up with another option for us to look at if the board wasn't interested in entertaining the second.
How does, how does the you know, Andrews are resident trooper? So he has set days. How does the barracks patrol the region? Do do they send in on a, you know, just people cruising through camp?
So there, the way that it works is there's the the patrol one trooper that patrols Washington, Warren and Kent. And that's, I think it's roughly 120 square miles that they cover. So there.
They're in those towns when the resident troopers are not.
Right, so they're, you know, they're addressing whatever may happen, you know, whether it's motor vehicle accidents, you know, they're patrolling those three towns.
So
And just from a
he
Sorry.
A second trooper would only come in and if Andrew calls for assistance.
What do you, in for right now?
Yeah, like right now, if Andrew's on duty, say there's a motor vehicle crash, and then there's something else where now he's got two priorities in two places, he's gonna call for backup anyway?
They generally send a second, they generally prefer to have two troopers at any incident. So if there were a motor vehicle crash and Andrew was working, he would, another trooper, and depending on the you know, if it was a crime, then it would be a, you know, supervisory and other assets, but motor vehicle crash, you'd get a second trooper. And then if there were a second incident at the same time, hang on, if there was a second incident at the same time, two, they would need to have two troopers come from I don't know where. I don't know where um to respond to at whatever that second call maybe.
So those extra troopers, they're not, we, we don't get billed for that. That's all part of the responsibility of the state police.
Um, I, yeah, we wouldn't get billed for that.
Okay.
For overtime like um. Something like the pumpkin run. So that's a, a request that the chamber. Reimburses us for, because we are the contracted. We contract with the state police, so they send us the bill. And then we send, or Barbara sends um. The portion for the, the pumpkin run and it's all detailed in the, those spreadsheets. And so then the chamber, you know, pays the town for that. If Kent School had, if Kent School requests coverage for graduation or. What have you. They would be, they would pay that. That's that special duty.
So let me, let me understand this. So last year's budget for police protection, we had two hundred thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, I can't find the support information in the folder right now, but this year it's. That's for another forty-six thousand. So is what you're saying is this seventy-five thousand on top of that extra forty-five? Or forty-six? So, so what you're proposing is?
But when you say forty-six, that wasn't the overtime. Barbara, can you jump in here? I'm getting to the.
Proposed budget.
What is that?
Two hundred and thousand, right?
Let's see, two forty-six there. Proposed for this year, what we're talking about.
I'm sorry, I heard my name and I wasn't sure. What did you ask?
Um, I was just looking for the um, the spreadsheet that's in the folder. So. I believe in the budget, line two fifty-seven is two hundred thousand, two hundred. Thousand eight hundred.
The information that was provided.
Right.
By Joyce. That doesn't include any. Additional coverage. And I believe the information that she requested on her detail was seventy-five hundred dollars of overtime. And that information is in the shared folder. Do I need to pull it out and screen share it for everybody?
No, I think that was there.
Yeah, I, if you want to look at that, we can look at that.
Said, no.
I think, I don't need to, I'm looking at it.
I don't, Glenn, I don't see where you got the two forty-six.
Proposed budget, February seventeenth. Two thousand and three, two thousand and twenty-three? Police protection? Am I in the wrong line?
Nope.
Fifty-seven, line fifty-seven?
Just, you want to jump in here? So the original document said two hundred thousand eight hundred, now it's two forty-six.
That's because Barbara carried over the original. You and I just got the paperwork last week from the state. Um, we talked about it, I told you I added his phones, all the ancillary expenses, the overtime. So my request for his line now is two forty-six and some change, I think.
Twenty-one, yeah.
Oh, twenty-one, right? Two forty-six or twenty-one?
Yep.
Right. So that's the current request for this year. It does include seventy-five hundred dollars worth of overtime for Andrew. It doesn't include any extra. Above and beyond. Well, it can be for anybody, but it's only seventy-five hundred dollars. It's not the number Gene presented today.
So how is Litchfield looking at three hundred and forty-eight thousand for two troopers?
I can't answer that for Litchfield.
That's, that's like, you know.
When is that article from Rufus?
So in the Waterbury, February eleventh.
But aren't they on a different program?
Program, I, I don't know, I have, I'd have to ask Denise Rap.
Two resident state troopers. And uh talking about the number of calls they responded to, they responded of, the total for the two of them. Is five hundred and seventy, uh five hundred and fifty-five calls. In the last three months of two thousand twenty-two. So if you extrapolate that out, then the, but they're getting. You know, twenty-two hundred calls a year. Um, but they got rid of the two constables. Or when they, while they both retired, but they were not replaced for cost reasons. And those guys had responded to two hundred and. Two hundred and fifty-nine calls during that time.
So if these numbers are even close to accurate, we're looking at one trooper for two hundred and forty-six thousand. And then a second trooper part-time for seventy-five thousand, so all of that is.
No, not a second trooper part-time. It, we, we can't. It, we're not talking about a part-time trooper because we can't get a part-time trooper and we have to use. The, the language that's been given to me. So this is planned overtime.
Hell, it planned overtime, that's, that's.
And overtime.
And so we're looking at seventy-five thousand of planned overtime. So we're looking at, you know, however we say this, so we're looking at three hundred and north of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Above what we budgeted last year. I mean, that's, that's, that's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars more. Just to be clear. Last year was two hundred. We're looking at a hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase, based on these numbers.
If you want to do that, the seventy-five thousand dollars of planned overtime.
Because we're, we're, we're considering putting seventy-five thousand dollars on this line, right?
Well, no, what we're considering is Andy Osip's request that we fund a second trooper. That's true.
Be honest with you, I don't think. I don't think the town's gonna go for that.
It's still police protection, so it's, it's one trooper or planned overtime. That, that number is still going to go up. If it's another line, then it is, but, but that's police protection. So we're going to go from two hundred to three twenty with this plan, just to be clear. Are we willing to do that?
I don't think, I don't think that. Town would want that at this stage of the game.
And just, and you know, I just the fact that we're hearing some of these numbers for the first time um for the uh. You know, the calls in two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two and, and what we've seen here on the screen again is great, uh you know, it's good work, but. I would love to see it in, in the drive. I, I don't think it's, the, the stuff is there. Uh, I'd love to consider this. Again, um, I'm not going to say no, but um, but I agree with Rufus, so it's, it's, it's very steep.
I just, you know, I, Litchfield's a larger town than we are.
Right, and they're also in the same town as the, the troop, so they're, you know. They're in the hub of. Their police department, basically.
Yeah, but essentially, you know, a hundred and seventy-four thousand per trooper. So the estimated co- uh cost for, for them as opposed to one trooper here, one, one seventy-four to two forty-six. That's a very large difference.
I don't know what that maybe didn't include or did include. I. I, I will ask Denise Rap for. What their number is. I'd rather not hang my hat on. What we read in the newspaper.
Well, it's quoted, you know, it is according to Rap, you know, she was quoted and. Whatnot.
I think part of the problem may be that. You're looking at the two forty-six as if that's the only cost and it's just the trooper, but. As you can see from what Joy submitted, the trooper is one sixty-one. And then there's fringe on top of that office cell phone and then overtime to come up to the two forty-six.
Yeah, but they don't have fringe included in that, the numbers.
That would make sense.
Yep. Because fringe first aid employees is massive.
Uh, I, I still think that the vote. Against the um SRO was. Pretty one-sided. The, you know, I mean, that was, maybe, maybe people. Felt that, you know, the, the school had. Chances of, of something happening at the school are minimal, but. You know, that was, that was also. Argued that it would improve police protection in Kent, you know, I mean, it, I don't think the town is going to support it.
So we need to um. Make some sort of forward motion. So I will make a motion. To um.
We don't necessarily need to make motions here, Jean. We're just getting information about all the different line.
But we've been, a request was made. By Andy Osip. And if we, we need to decide if we're going to. He, he's requesting for us to put it in the budget. If we. So we need to let him know if we're going to be putting it in the budget. So we need to make a motion. And it's generally frowned upon to make motions in the negative. So I was going to make a motion in the positive that we add funding for a second trooper. I'm just trying to come up with a number. Um, Barbara, can you, that was two forty-six?
Well, two forty-six was the total and that included the overtime and the fringe and everything else. Do you need me to share it again?
Yeah, thanks.
So the two forty-six oh two one is everything. The trooper salary alone is the one sixty-one five seventy-five, the fringe is seventy-four thousand plus.
So I think we need to go with what we have here.
So what was, what was the sheet in the folder? That looked at police protection one seventy-one?
That was probably where I did the compilation of year over year. What I have on the screen now is what was provided to me as the proposed amount to put in the fiscal twenty-four proposal.
From the state police?
Correct, with a little bit of additional information from Joyce. Here's the letter from the state police on top. And there's the document from Joyce with her calculations and then here's some detail that the, that came with the letter. And that's all in the shared folder.
So police protection in, in line fifty-seven um fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two was a hundred ninety-five thousand four thirty. Um, last year, it in, it increased by five thousand. And this year by forty-six thousand or twenty-two point five two percent. That's a lot. For one.
But again. We get a turnkey service. One of the, you know, one of the expenses that I didn't even include in that spreadsheet was. The, you know, the just day-to-day management of that, of a constable. The turnkey that we get as far as health insurance um. All the fringe um paid time off, training. I mean. We. Job and that's all, that's, you know, and we create a relationship with. With them and they provide our law enforcement. You want me to get more information from Litchfield?
Yes.
Okay. So basically you want to know why theirs is so much lower for two?
Well.
At the end of the day.
At the end of the day. Yeah. Um, and it, you know. If we, if we're looking at sixteen hundred calls in two thousand twenty-two. Say it goes up to seventeen hundred. Um, and we had two troopers. Now all of a sudden, each trooper is dealing with. Not, you know, eight hundred and fifty calls. Couple of calls.
But it's not, it doesn't, the math doesn't work out like that Rufus, because they wouldn't be working the same shifts. They would, this would, you know, provide flexibility so that we could do more. Traffic enforcement, we would be able to have, you know, that more consistent seven-day-a-week coverage.
All I'm looking at is all the other things in this year's budget, I don't believe.
Yeah, I, I get it. I completely agree with you.
I don't think that this is the year to be thinking about a second trooper. Really don't. So.
So I'll come back with a little bit more information from Denise next week.
Thank you.
I'm gonna pull back in John Russell. John, is that John's iPhone two?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Think Eric was able to get back on with his.
Yep.
Laptop, I'll, on my screen on in a second.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Love technology.
When it works. So John, you're on phone only? Or are you on Zoom? Well, Eric, why don't you go?
I had to step out of the house first. I had to step out of the house first by going ahead, Eric.
Okay. So the, the membership of KVFD voted unanimously in late two thousand twenty-one after approximately eight months of hiring supplemental staff or EMS coverage to request full funding uh of hired staffing of two EMTs twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. This request was to ensure complete uninterrupted coverage of medical calls if our volunteers were unable to cover the shifts. Currently, we have nine volunteers who regularly sign up for shifts on a weekly basis. Uh, we lost two responders to retirement this year, but we continue to work to recruit additional responders. The current nine responders have the option to receive a department-issued stipend uh that is paid out of department coffers. In January, these nine volunteers responded, responders covered, excuse me, a hundred sixty-two six-hour shifts out of a possible approximate two hundred and forty per month. Of the nine, the range of shifts covered for the month by each person was four to twenty-nine. One of these responders who covered a large amount of volunteer shifts is a college student who's home, home for break. Even though we were able to cover a hundred sixty-two shifts in January, February shows a different scenario. For Sunday, February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, with only nine days left in the month, volunteers have only been able to staff seventy-one six-hour shifts. This is due to several factors that really remain beyond our control. Uh, we have one, the one responder returned to college. We had two responders on vacation. And we have one responder unable to respond due to illness. Uh, this decline in volunteer shift coverage had an increased effect on two areas. Increase in hired staff in an increase of open shift without coverage or scramble coverage. Um although we continue to recruit new members, uh, the estimated go-live time to begin responding to calls for a new EMT or EMR could take between six months to a year. A first-time EMS student spends approximately a hundred eighty hours in the classroom prior to ride-along time and orientation time before they are able to fulfill a shift. This is a huge time commitment for a new member along with their required department responsibilities as a new member. Um, as you can see from the January data, which I'll put up in a minute, uh, we did a good job covering our shifts, but with a few key responder scheduled interruptions, the data can change very quickly as has been the case in February. The full funding will allow us to schedule and hire staff without the need to request additional funding, as was the case this year. With the reimbursement funding formula set by the department and endorsed by the town, we're only requesting money for services rendered and paid, therefore keeping the funding within town control and any surplus would remain unused. Um, can I share my screen?
Uh, you should be able to.
So this just shows the uh, you all see that?
Yep.
Shows the January and February uh um shifts covered, open shifts, shifts covered by URM. And then the responders that uh covered the shifts for the volunteers. So I know the request was two hundred thirty thousand, I believe, for this year. Hoping you'll uh fund that.
I guess I'll ask a question. So the, the expect, the, you anticipate that it will follow a similar sort of um little bit of a wavy trend month over month seems that that's what's been happening. But not decreased dramatically, not increased dramatically. You don't have a number of people saying they're burnt out or gonna go on veteran status or have a bunch of folks in an EMT course or in a hopper somewhere.
Again, I guess it can change at any moment.
Right.
These responders, responder number five in January, the twenty-five shifts, if that responder, something happens to them, that's twenty-five shifts that need to be covered somehow.
Right.
And if it's two of them, then it's could be, uh, you know, forty or fifty shifts. Again, I, I, you know, I'm just looking at the data. I don't have the uh you know, the inside track on the actual responders like Bonnie or Allenwood, but.
Yep.
Eric.
Yes, sir.
Um, uh, most of these responders are older individuals. More, more likely to get injured or hurt, hurt. I mean, their recovery times would take longer, et cetera, et cetera.
I would say two of the nine are probably under thirty.
Right.
You know, four or five of them are probably in the thirty to fifty range. And then there's a couple that are probably older than that.
Okay.
And again, that's just a guess without looking at actual ages, but.
I mean, it's probably following the same trend as the town population.
And I think there's, you know, other factors. It's um, you know, where is an, a responder in their career? Are they, you know, everything has been affected by COVID. I know that COVID has accelerated people's, you know, decision-making as far as wrapping up um being an EMS responder. We are also seeing, I think, nationally, um, that stepping up to become paramedics because there's finally you know, the, that workforce while incredibly there's a huge shortage, but they're finally seeing the number, the pay rate um increase. So I think we'll see people who may enter in at a volunteer level, but then they're going to be um bouncing out into a paramedic program and then you know, who knows if, if they'll come back? So I think there's a lot of, lot of factors, a lot of variability.
And again, I'm just, you know, new to this job, but I'm looking at the, the budget from last year. Uh, the fire department runs on a, a a uh January to December uh budget. So last year's budget payment to ERM was uh just over a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. The two, two first months of this year were at thirty-six thousand seven hundred dollars. So.
Can you say that again, Eric?
Last year was a hundred eighty-five four sixty-three. Currently, this year with two month, in two months in, we're at thirty-six thousand seven sixty-one. You know, some of those invoices after the first of the year are from, I'm sure, December, but still a big nut.
And do you happen to know what the billing revenue was uh for last year?
Uh, one twenty-eight.
Box questions from the board.
So, so after a lot of talk about this line last year, we've, we finally settled at a hundred and thirty thousand. And then we added a hundred thousand this year to make two hundred and thirty.
That's correct.
Okay. So we added a hundred thousand because we thought that we would need that. We might run out. Um, how much is left? Four months remaining?
Over a hundred thousand. And partly that's because the billing from the fire department to this office is typically thirty days behind. So Eric has more up-to-date information than I do. But at this point, my records aren't even showing that the original hundred and thirty thousand has been expended.
And, and again, Barbara, aren't we run on a January to December? So that's probably part of the reason.
Maybe.
So we haven't even used the hundred thousand we put into this this year. We, because we haven't used a hundred and thirty yet. We originally budgeted.
We're at one twenty-three and change. However, the date of the last bill only billed the town through January fourteenth. So it's about a month in arrears.
Okay.
Right. And you're, what you projected or in the anticipated on that for current fiscal year is two thirty.
That is true, but I've made caveats to those anticipated numbers repeatedly saying that those are a baseline and those will be updated as I get closer to the end of the fiscal year.
Sure.
And I have better numbers.
Yep.
So Eric, the one eighty-five four sixty-three for last year includes everything from last year or are some of the numbers from this year, you, you alluded to the fact that some of them might have covered some December shifts.
Correct. So the, the billing, um, did some of the January bills do cover December inwards or December staff?
But that would have happened the previous January as well.
Correct. Yep.
So essentially the latest twelve-month figure is about a hundred and eighty-five thousand billed out.
Correct.
We have to budget on our own fiscal year and based on our own fiscal year for fiscal year twenty-two, the year we just ended in June, the town spent a hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars on this liability. That was last fiscal year. This year, it's trending that we will spend close to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Any other questions on the EMS thing side?
Nope.
Okay, so let's now go down to the um the request side. I think it's two twenty, two twenty-seven is the line. So in fiscal year twenty-one, it was eighty-six thousand five hundred. Twenty-two was one oh six. Twenty-three was one oh six and the request is for twenty-four is one twenty-six five hundred. John and Eric, do you want to just speak to that for a couple of minutes?
Well, to, to reiterate a, a number of my points from the last meeting, we've seen increases uh in, in our energy expenses. We're, we're foreseeing significant energy increases as, as well as um uh cons, uh, can increase in our expenses for consulting, uh, particularly in the, in the area of safety, uh, but also data uh collection s- systems that would really take some more of a, a technology consultant. So I, I, yeah, I didn't realize I was gonna be reiterating a, a lot of what I said last time.
No, I appreciate just a quick wrap-up.
Yeah, sure. Uh, I think we, we see our expenses uh increasing more than the twenty thousand dollar increase that we've requested. Uh, but we also at the same time feel that at, at this, at this time, we have the wherewithal to absorb some of those increases. Uh, we don't necessarily know how that'll look next year. But uh we've really, you know, done what we can to, to identify additional sources of revenue. We had a good meeting uh with Eric um and were able to identify some areas where we might be able to cut more expenses as well. Uh, the, one of the other areas, of course, was, was plant uh upgrades, uh, which Eric has done a phenomenal job of overseeing and, and scheduling uh again for energy efficiency.
I'm here.
Okay. Um, and we did bring on a, a volunteer grant writer. And our hope was to have secured a federal grant for our turnout gear. And that is not, yeah, that has been determined as not feasible for this year. Uh, so we're having the, the grant writer look into other opportunities as well. Uh, so we do, we don't know if that's an expense we're gonna need to shoulder ourselves. Uh, but um, that is not considered part of our grant increase request.
Thanks. Any questions, Rufus Glenn?
I'm good.
I think, I, you know, I think John went over a lot of this last time.
Yep.
So. Burned my nose.
Anything further, Glenn?
No, no, I think last time was, uh, it was the, the electric cost that, uh, that caught my attention.
Shocking. Sorry.
Couldn't help yourself. Thanks, Eric. Thanks, John.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So how do you want to move forward with, so we have the whole grants um section? That was, um, you know, we had a lot of those folks come and make presentations last time. Do we want to um make some decisions? Do we want to move, continue to move through? And then we're gonna make one vote next week? You might need an, one more meeting. I I'm gonna throw out there, because we're at three eleven right now and we need to wrap up thirty so that we can just have a half an hour to reconnoitre ourselves for the four o'clock.
I, I would rather not do all of the, in, all of them in a block because I am going to abstain from one of those votes.
Okay.
Um. Did I miss something with the paramedic? Or we haven't talked about that yet?
We, um, it we haven't talked about it in the, these couple of meetings. We had talked about it in the year in the past as far as, right. year in the past as far as, right?
Okay.
So we're losing a town?
No, I know, we're losing a key town and
The key town? Going up dramatically.
No problem. So Glenn, are you, are you saying you want to look at those or do you want to to continue to get information and then we go, we can go?
I don't want to vote in a whole block only because I'm not going to vote for the, I'm going to abstain from the Kent Library Association line.
Yep.
So how we want to do this? I don't know. I mean, did we go through line by line last year? I I mean, like, go back to the meetings.
We sort of went back and forth a little bit. We didn't go, you know, specifically line by line by line. Do we want to agree that at the next meeting we'll be voting on the grants and associations?
Yes.
Formulate. Pull out the you know, the motions that we need to pull out so that those of us who want to abstain, you know, can abstain.
What are we looking at going forward? What we are looking at certain salary lines?
Yep, so that's the next bucket. We'll start that. Now, if we want to go a few minutes over, but I have a number of phone calls and emails I need to respond to between now and before. But we can start that process.
And what else are you thinking that we need to look at? I mean, not, I'm not saying that we need to start, but I'd like to know what we're gonna be talking about next time.
So hang on one second, sorry.
Or unless anybody, you know.
I lost my place. So you know, the other way that we did tell folks that we were gonna discuss those salary requests at this meeting, we do have things that we need to get information from Barbara, which I know she has on the Northwest Transit. We need to decide, discuss more about the attorney fees. Look at DPW, you know, that's the, you know, one of the biggest departments.
Just as an aside, all the information that I have is available to all of you in that shared folder.
Yep.
With the exception of tax returns, which I don't believe are public information.
So do we want to spend this last fifteen minutes talking about those salary requests? Yes, we can stay focused on what we had previously talked about.
Yes.
Okay, so in that. So we can start with the tax collector? Debbie.
Hi, I don't think my, for whatever reason, I don't have a video.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
I don't know why. Maybe by the time we have the next meeting, I will start the video.
No worries. We can hear you. That's the most important part. Yep, that's about all I can handle.
Okay. I think my letter is pretty self-ex, oh, look, I can see myself. I don't know if you can. I think my letter is fairly self-explanatory. I've been doing this job for over thirty years. And when I looked through the current budget, I was amazed to see that the tax collector salary of a department head was behind, was third in, third from the bottom when I have the two registrars and who was the other person I included in that? And I just don't think that's right. That's my basic premise. If you want to ask me questions about the job, in the past I have compared bills and prices and costs per unit. I can break that down again, but I would like to know from you what you would like to know from me so I can justify an increase in the salary. So does anybody have an idea of what they want me to do differently to make more money?
So you're part-time, correct?
Yes, definitely.
And so eighteen hours a week.
Oh, sorry, Jean, but just to write on that, that means I have always been a believer in total compensation. The fringe, as you called it, when you were talking about the resident trooper. My, I don't have any fringe to include in this salary. But as you said with the resident trooper, it is a significant part of that salary and it's a significant part of all salaries in the building. And I don't have that. So I think at some point there has to be some recognition of the lack of fringe. Well, I don't know the rest of you feel.
Debbie?
Yes, sir.
You, I don't know whether, you know, you know this off the top of your head or whatever, but my understanding is that the revenue that you bring in is typically more than what we anticipate.
The collection rate asked by the Board of Finance is ninety-nine percent. I have consistently through the years brought in more than that.
Thank you.
So right now, so when we talk about part-time versus full-time from a labor standpoint.
Keep getting, I don't need to keep interrupting you, but if you think it would help my salary to increase it another day, I can do that. I don't think it would increase the output. So that's why I have never done it in the past. I don't believe in wasting time. If you can get the job done in less time, by all means, don't penalize somebody for not sitting there just putting in time. And that's not to imply that anyone in the building is doing that. But I just find it.
Yeah, it doesn't, my feedback, it doesn't have anything to do with that. It just has to do with how the labor law, from my understanding, is there's a, there's a dividing point where it goes over a certain number of hours and then it's considered full-time. And that would be a benefited position. And Barbara, can you just double confirm that it's thirty hours a week?
I'd need to actually look at your policy procedure manual, but I, that's my understanding, but I'd have to look at that.
Joyce, it's thirty hours?
That's correct.
Okay. So I, so from what you're saying, it's not really a it's the, that position meets the criteria for a part-time position. And so it it's not a benefit-eligible position and that's why it doesn't have from my understanding, that's why it doesn't have benefits.
Well, my understanding is I've been doing it for almost thirty-five years. I have set the criteria for the job. I have said I could do it in less time. I'm saving the town money. But it has come to my opinion, to my attention, that I'm not gonna do this for the rest of my life either. So I think the other thing the town has to look at is who's going to take this job for what it's paid now? That's a good, what are you gonna do? I think it's time you sort of looked at it as a job and not the fact that I can do it in less time and get more than the product you're asking for. You need to look at, is this a good idea for the town? Should we be increasing it to maybe increase the pool of people who might be interested in a job that is not as easy as people think? So that's another thing you need to think about.
Other towns of our size are also part-time? As far as.
Salisbury is full-time. Cornwall's part-time, but Cornwall's smaller than we are. Washington is full.
What's the grand list for Salisbury and Washington?
The grandest number right off the top of my head, I can't tell you, but I can tell you they're both full-time jobs. You know, Jean, you have said consistently Kent is on that cusp of full-time, part-time and the building seems to be rolling towards full-time. So in order to keep the money rolling in, you might have to look at that. Not that I'm looking for a full-time job, believe me, I'm not, but as a board, you might be looking at that.
Just looking quickly at the grand list in those two other towns.
I think you need to look at you know, like the the numbers that make up the grand list.
So the grand list in Salisbury is one billion four hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and forty-seven thousand six hundred and nine. And Washington is almost, it it just over one point two five billion.
What was our last grand list?
It's in the folder, I believe. Jen, you're on the call, right? Probably. Hang on.
It is in the folder.
Twenty-nine, six hundred and twenty-nine million eight hundred thousand five ninety-five.
Remember, you've got a revow coming up this year.
Yep.
So I am not looking for a full-time job. Let's not sidetrack into thinking that that's my premise. I'm saying you have to realistically bump this up. And I don't think the fifty-some-odd thousand I was asking for is too much of a bump.
So when we look at the salary of forty-one thousand one fifty-three at eighteen hours a week, that hourly rate is forty-three dollars and ninety-six cents?
Jean, we all know that everybody in the building works more than the hourly rate, the numbers of hours that are posted on the door.
I, you can. Yep, I just need to, we need to have somewhere to start from. With the increase up to fifty-three thousand five hundred dollars, that brings it up to fifty-seven dollars and sixteen cents an hour.
It also brings it up to the range of the treasurer and the assessor, since we are all part-time and all dealing with the same six hundred thousand, six hundred million grand list. So all three of us have that same criteria. So I should at least be in line with them, I think. And as I said, I've got over thirty years of experience. A longevity bonus wouldn't be bad.
I agree that your present salary is way low. So.
Look toward the future if you're going to attract someone to the job.
So I, I, I'm just looking because again, there's some, we have to start somewhere as far as what's an equalizer, what's a something that is the same. And the hourly rate is the thing that is something where we can be, we can look at those sort of almost like a COC number. And increasing the salary to fifty-three thousand five hundred dollars puts, so the, I think Barbara is the, if you can just jump in here, looking to compare it to other hourly rates in town. So highway drivers, thirty-two sixty-five an hour. Thirty-four sixty-five an hour. Highway foreman is forty-nine dollars an hour.
I, I think you have to compare part-time, you have to compare the non-fringe people to compare equally. So I guess that would be the assessor and the, and the treasurer, how many hours and what's the hourly rate?
The assessor, what is the, sorry, Barbara, I don't mean to put you on the spot here.
Well, based on the posted office hours, currently the assessor's rate is fifty-three dollars and twenty-six cents an hour. Based on twenty hours a week for myself, my rate is forty-five dollars and thirty-four cents an hour. And the tax collector, based on the posted office hours that I had were eighteen hours a week, is currently making forty-five dollars and seventy-three cents an hour. So she's already above me.
And do we have any, anything for longevity?
No. And then just something to keep in mind when you add on the four percent that's been plugged in. That brings it up to fifty-five thousand six hundred and forty dollars.
No, no, no.
No, 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 Jean.
You're including.
I'm not asking for the four percent on, that is with, that's the bottom line. No, no, no. So what is it, if you just add four percent to the current, what what am I asking for in addition to the four percent?
How many hours does the tax assessor work? Posted?
You know, I don't want this to be a battle between the assessor and the treasurer and the tax collector either. It's just that we're the only three.
No, I, I, I'm just curious and I'm not trying to make it. I don't think anybody should be comparing their job to anybody else's. But I want to have some facts to try to figure out what's inside Jean's head a little bit there, going by the number of hours in the hourly wage.
So if you take the forty-one thousand one fifty-three current and add four percent, it's forty-two seven nine nine.
That didn't ans- answer my question at all about.
I was trying to answer the question that was asked before.
What was the number that I gave you of fifty-three thirty-six is based on twelve hours a week for the assessor.
Thank you. And your hours?
Based on twenty hours a week.
Okay. Thank you.
So if you take the difference, um between the, what would be the four percent increase to the fifty-three five hundred of the request, that's ten thousand seven oh one, and that would be twenty percent. Let me just double-check my math.
Now, the forty-two seven nine nine is, is what was budgeted this year.
Right.
Then you'd have to add four percent to that and then subtract, so it's not ten thousand something. Anyhow. Thank you, Debbie, for speaking up.
Oh, well, thank you.
So.
Glenn, you have a question I can answer?
I, I think I'm good for the moment. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, just to try and do this in the order that it.
It's three thirty-four.
Yeah, so we need to make some decisions. Sorry, I got focused on the conversation. I think we, we need to wrap here and pick this up next week. We're probably gonna need to add one more week. Which we did build in a little bit of a buffer. Um. So we'll take this up, but I think we're back at three o'clock, back to three o'clock next week.
I think it would help if you actually scheduled people. Now, like, so people don't have to come on at two o'clock and wait until whatever, I mean, you know, within. So anyhow, I'm not ready to make any decision on anything. I want information and then once we have it, we can go through and make our decisions.
What more information can we get for you as far as this?
I'm good.
Want to see like out number of hours a week and salaries and um, little bit of a just so you can sort of see everything out in one place?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I want to take a look at the entire budget and where we're at and.
You have.
What we're gonna be reporting.
Okay. So we'll work on that information to get to you for, um, the next meeting.
We still have the town clerk.
Yep.
And a couple of other folks.
Yep. So I'll make a motion to adjourn at three thirty-seven.
Second.
Thank you, all those. Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I'll see you in a couple of minutes.